Hello, good afternoon. Thank you, candidate Adams. Sitting at the head table. We appear to be missing one of our candidates. Okay, so we have a hearing problem. We have a sound problem. Can you hear me, Joella? Okay. Can't hear down here. How is it in the back? No good. Seems to be pretty universally bad. Does me and I recite the ABCs or something? Ah, is that now the sound of me spreading around the room?
Testing, testing.
Nope.
Testing.
Wendy, can you hear in the back?
Testing.
Okay. Now can you hear in front? Okay. So, starting over. Welcome to City Club this afternoon in our debate between Sam Adams and Nick Fish, Hello, good afternoon. Thank you, candidate Adams. Sitting at the head table. We appear to be missing one of our candidates. Okay, so we have a hearing problem. We have a sound problem. Can you hear me, Joella? Okay. Can't hear down here. How is it in the back? No good. Seems to be pretty universally bad. Does me and I recite the ABCs or something? Ah, is that now the sound of me spreading around the room?
Testing, testing.
Nope.
Testing.
Wendy, can you hear in the back?
Testing.
Okay. Now can you hear in front? Okay. So, starting over. Welcome to City Club this afternoon in our debate between Sam Adams and Nick Fish, who are running for city council. And we're proud to be co-sponsoring that event with the League of Women Voters. The event today will be moderated by Susan Hammer. I'm Corleene Kraft, and I approve of the following messages. We will not be talking about how much weight they've gained or lost, because I think the press has handled that, and then some. In any case, a few announcements before we begin. Next Friday will be our debate between the mayoral candidates, and it will be moderated by Randy Gregg of the Oregonian. We will be having our book club Citizens Read on September 27th. That's this next Monday night at the Zimmerman Community Center on Lovejoy. And the book will be Resistance by Oregon author Barry Lopez. And that will be moderated by Christopher Zinn, who's from the Oregon Council for the And the New Leaders Council will be co-sponsoring a second round of Candidates Gone Wild on Monday, October 18th, at the Roseland Theater. Might be an interesting contrast to this event today. So far, Jim Franciscone and Tom Potter, Golia Mary and David Wu, Sam Adams and Nick Fish will be there with musical guest The Minders. Now, on Thursday, October 14th, we have a really exciting event that I hope you'll mark your calendars for, and that is a hard hat party. So you can preview our new ground floor offices and cafe combo that we have -- we will be moving into on November 1st. It's over here on the corner of Park and Washington. Ground floor space, so you can drop in and have a cup of coffee and blog out loud. We'll supply the hard hats, and it's a fundraiser, so that you can help us furnish. We've been living with hand-me-downs for probably 30 years in City Club, so we're actually wanting to have some nice furniture there, so you will be able to -- since people will be able to see it. There will be live music by The Retrofits, and our partner Voila Catering will be providing the food. So it should be a lot of fun. Now, details on all of these events are available online, which is pdxcityclub.org. And we now have a citizens blog, which is the online version of sitting around and talking to each other. And new topics are posted every week, and you don't have to be a member to join in the conversation, but it is one of the benefits of membership. And Gwen Millias is going to come up and tell you some of the other benefits of membership. Gwen is the member of the Board of Governors and the head of the New Leaders Council, and she is a partner in the identity marketing firm of Stevie and Millias.
Good afternoon, everybody. I heard an interesting fact the other day. As many as 50 percent of you sitting in this room are probably not members of the club. And I welcome you, non-members, to City Club. You are always welcome to come. But isn't it time to become a member? If you value the kind of debates that we put on, the research that we put out, the conversations that you have with the people at the table around here, please think about signing up for membership. Your membership dollars directly benefit all of these things. The program here at the Governor, getting the research done, all the other evening programs, book clubs. Your membership dollars pay for those things. I was asked to go through this membership packet and talk to you about the benefits of membership, and I promised Jake, who asked me to do this, that I wouldn't read them off in monotone, so I'm just going to give you the highlights. Benefits of belonging to the City Club include being able to come to these forums for free and getting discounts on the lunch. Being able to volunteer to conduct research on the part of City Club. Joining together with citizens like yourself and doing volunteer research, which I think is really the backbone of what the club provides the community. Belonging to issue committees, where you get to sit down and look at the various issues that affect our city in depth with like-minded members, or members that have a different opinion than you do, but a chance really to get into the meat of these issues in a small group setting. All sorts of after-work seminars. New Leaders Council events are certainly open to everyone, but as a member, they're free. You also get all of the club's publications for free. And you get leadership skills and development from the club, and that's something that I would like to talk to you about. I think that's the biggest thing that the club has done for me. I've been a member since I graduated from college. My father bought me a membership as a birthday present, and since that time, I've taken part in all sorts of interesting club activities, including the issue committee. And then I had the opportunity to help the club expand membership among people under the age of 30. And it's been a very rewarding experience. I'm very glad I've done it, and I highly recommend membership to people, especially my age, but to everyone. So please pick up a form on the back table, and if you have any questions about being a member and would like to ask me, I'm here for the rest of the lunch. Thanks.
Well, I'd like to take credit for the City Club training Gwen in all of her capacities as a leader, but she was awfully good raw material. So she's been a great leader for the club. I would like to thank our sponsors at this time, because we're very grateful for their support. They help make these broadcasts possible. This quarter's sponsors are McEwen-Gizwald LLP, The Standard, and Medico Support Services. We also offer programs on tape and on CDs, if you'd like to buy something, so that you can watch it again and again and again. Now, if you would please all turn off your electronic devices that might make some noise, whatever that one was. I think it was Tim's camera. And now I would like to introduce Susan Hammer, who will be moderating the debates today. Susan is a member of the City Club Board of Governors. She's a Portland attorney, a mediator and arbitrator, who is currently focusing on business and employment disputes.
Thank you, Corleene, and welcome to the city council debates, co-sponsored by the City Club of Portland and by the League of Women Voters. Today, we will hear the views of two individuals who are seeking a leadership position in the city that we know and love best. This is how we'll proceed. First, each candidate will give a two-minute opening statement. A coin toss determined the order of appearance in this debate. Following the opening statements, the candidates will respond to questions that were suggested in advance of this meeting by representatives of the City Club and the League of Women These are the only -- a question-writing committee from the two organizations composed the final set of questions. These are the only questions which will be asked today. There will be no questions from the floor. We will rely upon the judgment of our distinguished panelists from the City Club and the League of Women Voters, who are seated here, to decide whether or not the candidates have answered the questions. If two or more of the panelists raise their cards indicating that they feel a question has not been answered, I will restate the question and ask the candidate to reply again in 30 seconds or less. Our panel today consists of Aubrey Russell, a member of the City Club Program Committee, and Frances Baker and Chris Hudson from the League of Women Voters. Following those questions, the candidates will have the opportunity to ask questions of one another. Each candidate will have the opportunity to ask a question of the opposing candidate, and then they will be rotated. Then finally, each candidate will make a three-minute closing statement. As for your part, please be respectful and hold all applause and expressions of favor or disfavor, pleasure or displeasure, until the end of the program. Kathleen Gardapi will be serving as our timekeeper, and she'll be signaling me when the time is up. First, I'd like to introduce our candidates. Sam Adams entered politics as an intern for Peter DeFazio, then-chair of the Lane County Board of Commissioners. He went on to serve as press secretary for Representative DeFazio's successful 1984 congressional race. After filling a position with the Democratic House Campaign Committee, Sam went on to manage a successful election campaign for Mayor Vera Katz, and subsequently served as her chief of staff until last fall. Sam lives in the Kenton neighborhood of North Portland. Nick Fish has 17 years of experience as a labor and employment attorney. He is currently of council to the Meyer &amp; Wise Law Firm. He is a founding member and chair of the Advisory Board of the Mark Hatfield School of Government at Portland State University, and the former vice-chair of the Housing Authority of Portland. He lives in northeast Portland with his wife and two children. I would now like to ask the candidates to approach their podiums, and we will begin with opening statements. First, from Mr. Adams, followed by Mr. Fish.
Well, thank you. It's an honor to be here. I would not be standing at the podium today if it were not without government helping me out through some tough times, without good public schools and affordable universities, without having the opportunity to work my way up the job ladder, starting as a restaurant dishwasher to becoming a mayoral chief of staff. And it grows out of my experience, of my upbringing, that I chose public service as my life's work, with the conviction that government can and must always do better for all of us. So it is with this background, it is no surprise, that I am running to shake up City Hall, to be a tough advocate for Portland's families, to ensure that city government focus on what's important to regular Portlanders in every neighborhood, not big contributors and high-priced lobbyists. Of course, all candidates running for every office says some version of this. The difference is that I have, in this race, is for 10 years, I demonstrated that I was ready, willing, and able to take on dysfunctional bureaucracy. And drawing on that experience, I'm a candidate who offers a comprehensive plan of detailed specifics on how I'll implement my vision. Now, if you think when I'm critical of city government that I am knocking my former boss, Mayor Vera Katz, you're wrong. By the way, she's watching. Hi, Vera. Eat. Time will show -- time will show the great depth of her accomplishments, and I know firsthand her love for the city. But this race is about Portland's future, and I am my own person with my own take on things. I look forward to -- am I done? I look forward to talking about the specifics. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Fish. Your opening statement?
Thank you, City Club. As Yogi Berra once said, "It feels like deja vu all over again." Sam, didn't we already have our City Club debate? On a more serious note, I'd like to acknowledge Senator Hatfield, who is hospitalized in Maryland. I've had the privilege of working with Senator Hatfield as the chair of the Advisory Board of the Hatfield School of Government at Portland State University. I know everyone in this room joins me in sending our best wishes to him for a speedy recovery. I feel fortunate to stand before you today. In the May primary, I faced a number of significant challenges. My opponent significantly outspent me in the race. He received the endorsement of the Oregonian, and he has a great Rolodex. On May 18th, however, the voters in this city sent a strong message that they want fundamental change and that they are tired of the status quo. Throughout this campaign, I have said that I will bring some fresh ideas and a different perspective to City Hall. I have 17 years of business experience. I understand how burdensome regulations, high taxes, and an unresponsive bureaucracy can hurt job growth. I have been a change agent in my community service. As a volunteer board member of the Housing Authority of Portland, I was part of the leadership team that helped to secure a $35 million grant to revitalize the New Columbia, that developed a strategic plan for the organization, and that overhauled the agency's minority contracting policy. When I am elected to city council, I will use my background and experience to lead this city and to forge collegial and constructive relationships with my colleagues. Today, I look forward to debating the issues with my opponent. As your next city commissioner, I am committed to working tirelessly to tackle the tough problems which face this city. Inspired by the people that I have met during this campaign, I am confident that Portland's best days are ahead of us. Thank you.
We will now move to the portion of the program where I will ask the questions prepared in advance by the City Club and League of Women Voter Members. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to respond to the question. Following each answer, the opposing candidate will have the option of a 45-second rebuttal. The candidates have not seen these questions in advance. First question is for Mr. Adams. Mr. Adams, the media often reports that the city offers incentives to lure large businesses to the area. However, nearly 80 percent of businesses in Portland employ fewer than 50 people. Have we reached the right balance of investment between small and large businesses? And what specifically can we be doing to nurture and support small local businesses to ensure their success?
I think our efforts to allure outside big businesses to the city should be limited to those that will strengthen those businesses that are already here. And I do think that there are a number of things that we need to do to help Portland's small businesses. And I've put on record, you can pick it up on your way out, a plan to both find $10 to $15 million in savings in city government, and that a portion of that be used to create a strategic investment fund for small businesses, because I want the Knicks' great business breakout to be from a Portland business. We need to lower our taxes, both in terms of raising the owner's compensation deduction and lowering the overall rate. We need to cut red tape and make sure that every regulation on the books has a performance measure and has an automatic review date. Not every regulation is going to be perfect, and those that aren't should be automatically reviewed. And things change. We can't expect one regulation to last in a valuable and legitimate way for the years that they are on the book.
Thank you. Mr. Fish?
There are 43,000 neighborhood small businesses in our community, and they are the bedrock of our local economy. I think, as a general matter, we spend much too much time focusing on luring the next big thing, and we don't spend enough time nurturing our existing businesses. I, too, have called for some fundamental changes, including tax relief by increasing the owner's compensation deduction, a complete reform of the system's development charges, which inhibit job growth, particularly among small businesses like restaurants, and establishing the right priorities in City Hall. I will also provide leadership and be an advocate for our small business community.
Thank you. The next question is for Mr. Fish. Mr. Fish, let's assume that you have --
Susan, I have a hard time. It's very hard for us to hear you up here. There's something with the speaker.
Okay. Are you ready? Mr. Fish, let's assume that you have been elected. What hard decision would you need to make? Who will be pleased with your decision? Who will be angry about it? And why would you do it anyway?
What a great question. How much time do I have?
You have 60 seconds.
The hardest decision that I'm going to have to make is to completely change the focus -- I'm sorry. I have to lean -- how's that? Otherwise, I have to lean forward, and that's -- Susan, can I reclaim my time?
Okay, let's start over.
Could you repeat the question, please? I think just fairness.
Let's assume you've been elected. What hard decision do you need to make? Who will be pleased with your decision? Who will be angry about it? And why would you do it anyway?
I think the hardest short-term issue that we're going to have to grapple with on this council is how we promote and grow the local economy and bring back good jobs. To do that, we have to establish the right priorities. And that means investing in things like infrastructure, making sure that there is tax relief for our small businesses, setting a new tone in City Hall. When you change priorities, it means that other things that typically get funded are going to go by the wayside. We have had a tradition in this city of all of the commissioners pursuing their pet projects. Everybody has something that they want to do, from Major League Baseball stadiums to burying the reservoirs. And when we start focusing on the right priorities, other commissioners are going to have to curtail their pet projects. And that, I think, is going to cause a little friction, but it is a sea change that is going to be required if we're going to turn the ship around.
Okay, the question marks have gone up. That means you have 30 seconds to restate or rephrase your question.
Did I get all three?
Tell your answer.
I am prepared to move on increasing the owner's compensation deduction from $75,000 to $125,000. I am prepared to make investments in public safety by filling vacancies. I am prepared to investing in infrastructure so our roads are navigable. That means, assuming we don't have new revenues, we are going to have to take money away from other worthy projects. I will focus on the right priorities, even if it means that certain pet projects don't get funded.
Thank you. Mr. Adams, your rebuttal?
I will cut up to $15 million in waste from city government by initiating a top-to-bottom zero-based review, outside review of major functions within the city to help staff up policing and community policing. I would initiate integrated budgeting with the Board of County Commissioners, so that the $350 million that is currently spent by local government on law enforcement and corrections is spent more wisely. We need 57 officers to get up to 1,000 officers. We need to fill another 300 to 500 jail beds. We can find the savings in the $350 million we currently spend if we do things different. I'm proud to have the endorsement of Serena Cruz and Maria de Rojo de Steff in working relationships with everyone on the board, and I would put that to good use to make sure that public safety is funded.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, the next question is for Mr. Adams. Portland's sewer rates are becoming burdensome on current taxpayers, or ratepayers, in part because of the Bureau of Environmental Services' Big Pipe Project. Besides continuing to increase sewer rates, do you have any other ideas about how we could fund the big-ticket items that BES has undertaken?
City is a $1.9 billion organization. 1.5 of it are the costs of sewer and water. It is more utility than it is anything else. And yet, I don't have experience renting any utility. Nick doesn't, neither does anyone else on the board. I propose creating a Portland Utility Commission and staffing it with folks that have some experience at utilities, that have experience at utilities and at environmental issues, and would ask them to go through an outside audit, a zero-based budget review, to get those rates down. Oh, I got 30 more seconds? Oh, I'm sorry. What was I saying? I get so excited. I think this is really important. It does a couple of other benefits. It removes politics from the issue of ratemaking and oversight, and the city council tries their best to provide oversight. But when they're busy dealing with awfulish dogs and police shootings and everything else, this utility does not get enough scrutiny and oversight from elected officials. It just doesn't, and rate revolt is not far away, and we need to eliminate that secret franchise fee.
Time, thank you very much. Okay. Mr. Fish?
We have two of the greatest natural advantages of any city in the country. We have pure water, and it's delivered by gravity. And yet, we have the highest cost water and sewer rates in America. So I'd start by taking the Water Bureau as a poster child for a dysfunctional bureau. I would take it down to the studs. I would bring outside experts in, and I would rebuild it. Second, I will continue to oppose wasteful spending, like the unnecessary membrane filtration plant on Palbutte and Reservoir Burial. And third, I will generate money by taking that misguided tarp that everyone tries to either sell on eBay or give away. I will cancel the tram, and I'll put a slip slide from OHSU down to South Waterfront.
Okay, the next question is for Mr. Fish. The Portland Development Commission is considering a new urban renewal area in the Northwest Industrial District. It is estimated that the area would create an additional tax loss of $750,000 to $1 million a year to the city and county. Are you in favor of a new urban renewal area in the Northwest Industrial District? And please explain.
Thank you. You know, I've been critical of PDC in a number of respects, including in those areas where they've over-promised jobs and failed to deliver, like the Urban Renewal District in Lentz. And it is true that urban renewal districts take away from vital funding for local government. I think this particular proposal for an urban renewal district, an industrial urban renewal district, has a lot of merit, however. It's different. It has non-contiguous lines, and that breaks with tradition. And it's being used, it's been proposed for an industrial area. But the reason that it has been proposed is twofold. One, to help clean up the brownfields in that area. And two, to land a future contract with Siltronic. We are so hungry for new jobs and local economic activity that I think we have to do everything we can to keep Siltronic here. And so if an industrial urban renewal district provides the additional resources we need to have them make a significant investment in our community, I will support it.
Thank you. Mr. Adams?
Under the right conditions, I will support it as well. You only need to drive around the Northwest Industrial Area and then take a drive around Rivergate Industrial Area, and you see a remarkable difference, a big difference. One is vital. One has low, reasonably low vacancy rates. The other one, a lot of good work happening there, important jobs there, but clearly not enough public investment. And Siltronic, we are competing internationally for an expansion at the Siltronic plant. It's going to be really tough for us to get it, but it is one of those big jobs that I talked, employers I talked about earlier, that would strengthen our economy here, that would strengthen Portland's existing small businesses. And based on what I know of it, I support it and the tax increment designation as well.
Thank you. The next question's for Mr. Adams. There is tremendous dispute over the future of Portland General Electric and about how to protect ratepayer interests. What do you think is the best option for ownership of PGE? And specifically, do you support the idea of the city of Portland purchasing PGE?
Well, first off, let me say the state law needs to be changed. The PUC in this state is like a horse with blinders and a feedbag on. They can only look at the exact proposal in front of them, brought to them by the private sector. I think it should be opened up so they can look at all possible proposals, because through this process, we as ratepayers will not know which option is best for us. I have not, I'm not convinced that Texas Pacific is the way to go at all. When I was in City Hall, and I know things have changed, it's been over a year, I did not see a proposal that I could sign off on yet.
Thank you. Miss -- oh, we have question marks up. You have -- Thank you. Miss, oh, we have question marks up. You have thirty seconds to amend your answer.
My criteria for judging the future sale of PGE, and by the way, this is the single most important economic development question that the state and the region are going to answer in the next forty-five days. It's estimated for every percentage reduction in power, cost of power, we can generate over thirteen hundred jobs in the PGE territory. But, low-cost, reliable electrical supply, keeping the jobs of PGE here under what form of ownership, and more social benefits. Seattle and Portland have low-cost power for poor elderly, and so should Portland.
Time. Thank you.
We have two great advantages when it comes to trying to attract new business to Oregon. One is we've had historically low workers' comp rates, and two is we've had historically cheap power. The future disposition of PGE is not just important to Portland, it is important to the entire state. Two years ago, I thought the match between PGE and Northwest Natural was the best fit, created synergies, and ensured local control. I have significant concerns with Texas Pacific's proposal. They haven't proposed significant rate reduction. The local control issue is, is cloudy. And I'm concerned about worker pension rights. If the PUC turns it down, my preference would be a public corporation to which the State of Oregon invests substantial money so we're at the table. But if that is not an option, I will study carefully public power.
Thank you. Time. Okay. You have thirty seconds to amend your answer.
In fairness, one of the significant handicaps that anyone in this room has in talking about public power is that, as with PGE Park, the entire conversation has occurred behind a closed door and in secret. How many people in this room have seen the confidential documents that the city has in connection with the offer that they made? Absent seeing those documents, how can anyone in this room comment on public power if you haven't done the due diligence and if we haven't had access to those documents? So I have said, as a future city commissioner with access to that information, I will consider public power. But until then, I don't have the information.
Thank you. Next question is for Mr. Fish. The federal government is taking less and less responsibility for providing affordable housing, and it is becoming the responsibility of state and local governments. What policies at the state and local level would you advocate for to improve affordable housing options in Portland?
Well, I'm glad Commissioner Sten is here today, and I know I'll be graded on this answer, so I hope I do a good job. And I also want to acknowledge my friends from the Housing Authority of Portland who are here and who do so much to make affordable housing available in our community. The biggest disgrace of this current administration has been the cutback in federal dollars in support for housing. And the most recent disgrace is a cutback on Section Eight vouchers. And for city club members, that should resonate because you had a club recommendation a couple of years ago to move to a voucher-based system, a market-based system to deal with the affordable housing crisis. There are several things we can do right away. I support replenishing the Housing Investment Fund to the tune of eleven million dollars. That's already been done. I support changing state law so that tax increment financing dollars, up to twenty percent, can be used for affordable housing and a further change in the law, which allows us to take it out of urban renewal districts to avoid concentration. And I support the use of a land trust model to maintain both affordable housing and commercial spaces throughout our city. Those are three good ideas.
Thank you. Mr. Adams?
How much time do I have?
You have forty-five seconds.
Well, first off, I think we need to, again, look at the, the structural issue that we have three governmental agencies providing housing. We need to look at the, the overlap of administration, and are they indeed all pulling together in the same direction? I know there's a lot of good intention there. I support resupplying the Housing Investment Fund with thirty million dollars in two bonds that the city would pay for as part of those savings that I mentioned from cutting government waste of ten to fifteen million dollars. We have eleven million, thanks to the leadership of Mayor Vera Katz and Commissioner Eric Sten. The first eleven million, we have more to go. I also, last spring, was the first to agree to the twenty million, twenty percent set aside for tax increment funding. And there's more that we need to do because the federal government is going to cut more.
Thank you. Next question is for Mr. Adams. It has been said that there are more similarities than differences between you and Mr. Fish. What distinguishes you, and why should that matter to the voters?
We know we do share a lot of progressive values, but we have a very different approach to how we would be a member of the city council. And I think it's a real and legitimate difference. Nick has taken me to task for being a wonk and implies that City Hall doesn't need a wonk as a city councillor and that he will hire his own wonks. Well, I found this attack kind of odd because I never thought I'd actually get attacked for trying to know what I'm talking about. But that's all right. It's true. I'm going to come out of the closet. I, I am a wonk. I, I actually care about the details. I know the big picture. I think the big picture is incredibly important. I believe in that strategic plan. And I've worked hard in, while I was in city government to begin the building blocks of that. But I'm going to wear Nick's attack for me being a wonk as a badge of honor. And I hope you all like my pocket protector.
Thank you. Mr. Fish?
Well, first of all, there are three significant, two significant differences that haven't got enough attention. Sam drives a relatively new pickup truck. I have a nineteen ninety-two beater that the Volunteers of America declined. And Renee Mitchell referred to Sam as a hottie, while the, a local newspaper referred to me as a used car salesman. Beyond that, there are issues that we disagree about. I have said that I think we can do better on Dignity Village. I say, let's set the bar higher. Sam supports it and has said he'd be willing to move families there. On the economy, I have said we make it our number-one priority. And I've laid out a whole set of issues and policies that have not been the priority of the administration when Sam served at city council. And finally, I bring a different, excuse me.
Thank you. The next question is for Mr. Fish. Currently, the Fire, Police, Disability and Retirement Fund has a one point two-six billion-dollar unfunded actuarial liability. Over the last three years, that has increased by one hundred million per year. Other than appoint a panel to study it further, what is your plan for dealing with this?
First of all, Susan, this is a pay-as-you-go plan, as everyone knows. And I, while I give the Oregonian credit for running some stories recently about it, there is some significant omitted information that really ought to be on the table. The most significant is, you cannot compare our current retirement system for firefighters and police officers with PERS, dollar-for-dollar, because the city's not required to make contributions for workers' compensation and Social Security. If you actually add up the two columns and compare the two systems, we come out a little bit ahead. The question is, as we go forward, and we have increased costs, how do we deal with it? The single most significant thing we can do in the short term is to staff up at the Fire Bureau and the Police Bureau. Because the single greatest contributor to enhanced disabilities in our community is understaffing and the injuries that that causes. Long term, I think we do have to look at this. And I would be prepared to take a hard look as part of a charter review commission within one to two years in my first term.
Okay. Mr. Adams?
Well, I think that this, even though the mayor sits on it and the auditor sits on it, the beneficiaries are represented. It's staffed by staff that the FPDNR board hires itself. I think it's time for an outside audit by experts in insurance and actuarial. This FPDNR, the police and fire deserve to have a sense of security that it's going to be here, not just today, but tomorrow. But the taxpayers also have a right to know how that compares to other retirement plans. And what is the future? Are the future assumptions that are being made by the board accurate? I think we need an objective outside audit to provide us with that.
Okay. The next question is for Mr. Adams. Portland neighborhood associations are considered to be a national emblem of citizen participation. However, because of their stature locally and nationally, it is difficult to evaluate the actual effectiveness of our neighborhood association. What, associations, what is one improvement you would make to Portland's neighborhood system?
I only get one. Well, first, I'm a big fan. And people who point to the individuals involved with the current system as the problem are wrong. The system needs to be improved. An example of how I would improve it, not only for those that are active but for all residents, is require that the city develop a basic level of service guarantee for all neighborhoods to ensure equity of services, police response times, fire response times, access to parks and recreational programs. And then I would make sure that this not, one point nine billion dollar budget, that's, that's just a large giant, be broken down and divided by every neighborhood in this city. You have a right to know how much of that one point nine is going to be spent in your neighborhood in terms of services and projects. And I'd require bureau managers and myself and ask the other members of the city council to go out with their draft budgets before they're even turned into requests and get public feedback up front. Because you, as citizens in your neighborhood, know what the priorities should be.
Thank you.
One answer?
Yes.
I would move the Office of Neighborhood Involvement to the auditor's office and accept the recommendation of the Neighborhood Summit. And the purpose here is to avoid a situation we've had over the last few years where it's been fairly political, and every time there's a new commissioner in charge, the agenda has changed. I think it's time to move it to a more independent perch, and I would park it with the city auditor.
Thank you. Mr. Fish, we hear a lot about the influx of college-educated twenty-five to thirty-four-year-olds moving to Portland despite the competitive job market. What specifically can the city do to encourage to lure these young, creative workers to Portland and encourage them to put down roots here?
You know, the great irony of economic planning is reflected in the fact that in the last eleven years, the City of Portland has commissioned and completed eleven studies on how to grow the local economy. Eleven studies that are collecting dust in some room at City Hall. And one of the greatest advantages we have is that unemployed people in their late twenties and thirties are coming here in droves, largely because of our quality of life, but rarely because we did anything specifically to recruit them. And it is one of our greatest strengths. Long term, it's going to help us with schools because they're going to have kids. They want to stay in Portland. They don't want to move to the suburbs. And they are the source of incredibly inspiring ideas for future business and opportunity. But their concerns are threefold: affordable health care, jobs, and housing. Their concerns around housing are the same concerns that other people their age who can't afford affordable housing. So that, our current strategy addresses that. Health care, I think we ought to partner with the county to find a way to-
Thank you. Mr. Adams?
It's political season, and everybody talks about what they want to do, but so few candidates actually sort of detail how to get it done. A lot of what we're talking about here today, a lot of what all the candidates for city council and mayor are talking about today, will require additional resources. And I'm the only candidate for city council who has set a goal of cutting ten to fifteen million dollars to pay for some of this stuff. You know, if it was easy, it already would have been done.
Thank you. During this portion of the program, each candidate will ask three questions of the other. Questions must be asked in thirty seconds. The opposing candidate will have one minute to respond, after which the questioner will have the option of a thirty-second rebuttal. We will alternate between the candidates and begin with Mr. Fish. Mr. Fish, your first question of Mr. Adams?
Sam, a committee, a city commissioner must be a strong manager as well as a legislator for the city. Who are your role models and why?
Well, I have a number of role models. Among others, I would say that Peter DeFazio has been a mentor to me, probably my oldest mentor in terms of time spent with me. He's someone who demands results. He's not afraid to take on both friend and foe alike if he feels an injustice is being done. He's not afraid to take on waste or corruption. And he's in effect, he's effective at both the big-picture policy and making sure that it's done right for folks on the street, in the neighborhoods, and in businesses. He's my first role model. I've been lucky to have others. My former boss, Vera Katz, is someone who genuinely believes and has a genuine love for this city and has a thirty-five, whether you agree or disagree with her, she's got a thirty-five-year record of making the kinds of changes that reflect that love for the state and this city. And her concern and, and her, her empathy on the human level has been a role model for me as well.
Thirty seconds for rebuttal.
I'll just mention four. I'll start with my father. He was a Republican. His son is a Democrat. He cast a decisive vote to impeach Richard Nixon, or in favor of articles of impeachment. I hope that I can be as fearless. I'll mention Randy Leonard, who I think is doing a terrific job managing the Bureau of Development Services. Gretchen Kefory, who I think was an advocate for housing that even Eric would say sets the standard. And finally, my political mentor, Barney Frank, who showed us that you can use humor strategically in politics.
Okay. Mr. Adams, your first question of Mr. Fish?
Nick, we both talked about ending the secret deals at City Hall and, and, and ending the backroom deals at City Hall. And beginning early in my campaign, I proposed that City Hall lobbyists, paid lobbyists, be registered. And that it would help separate the difference between paid influence from citizen involvement. It took you five hundred days from when you first announced in the first special election, and it took until last Wednesday-
Time.
-to agree to this. Why?
When I got your email in August announcing your plan, I got a call from a lobbyist who may even be here today, who said, "What do you think?" And I said, "I think it's a great idea. I don't think it goes far enough." Because I think it perpetuates the myth that we have to blame someone else for our own problems. No lobbyist has ever forced a city commissioner to do something against his or her will. Accountability begins with city commissioners. Now, I'm happy to support a plan to register lobbyists. It has obviously had a very therapeutic effect in Salem. But the fact is, it starts with leadership on council. And I don't care whether you're a registered or an unregistered lobbyist. I don't care whether you're a contributor or not, a friend or family member. I will never put the city's interests ahead of my interests in terms of whatever you are selling.
Mr. Adams, thirty seconds?
Well, my proposal was put on paper last April, and it wasn't until last Wednesday that you agreed to it. And expressing the kinds of reluctance on Wednesday that you're expressing tonight, the fact of the matter is, is that this untraceable paid lobbyist, which is often connected to campaign contributions, and I support serious campaign finance reform, and, and, and needs to happen. We've got to go to the source. And if you're going to be, if you're going to show that leadership of being accountable, this goes on the top of the list in terms of improving citizen access.
Mr. Fish, your next question of Mr. Adams?
Sam, according to the city auditor, gang violence is going up at the same time that we are putting fewer resources into law enforcement. Looking back over your tenure in City Hall, what are some of the lessons that you would derive from this trend?
Well, clearly, the issue of resources. The mayor put together the anti-gang, anti-violence gang strategy based on the best practices in Boston and other cities. And she committed her personal time every Friday for years to make sure that things were done. But with the, you know, with the, the loss of resources, of revenues to the city, that has waned. I think that we've got to really energize community policing. I think that every neighborhood in the city has to have a community policing plan that's very specific. If there's a drug house, which is often related to gun violence, the plan, that needs to be on a top-ten list that, that both the police and the neighborhood associations agree and keep working at this list. Neighborhood leaders change, the police assignments change. We need something concrete in every neighborhood that details exactly who's going to do the journaling for that drug house, and exactly how much evidence needs to be recorded before the police that can come in. Community policing needs to get real.
Thank you. Mr. Fish, thirty seconds?
For me, this is, for me, this is about priorities, the right priorities. We have been making cuts in public safety now for five years, and we are cut to the bone. The only way community policing works is to get officers out of their cars, into the neighborhoods, and into our neighborhood meetings. That means we have to staff up. We have cut gang enforcement by a half as gangs are raging out of control in eastern Portland, East Portland. The fact is, it's time to take a stand, and I'm prepared to do so today. I will hold public safety harmless as we go forward because we cannot afford any more cuts.
Okay. Mr. Adams, your next question to Mr. Fish?
I've made really clear during the course of this campaign, I'm holding myself accountable to cut to ten to fifteen million dollars out of city government in terms of waste. And three years ago, I helped lead a staff, helped lead a staff effort that cut ten million dollars out of administrative costs, costs- dollars out of administrative costs, unnecessary cost in information technology, unnecessary cost in human resources. I've shown that leadership. It cost me the support of public employee unions for the city, even though I come from a union family. Nick, will you commit to the goal of cutting 10 to 15 million dollars in waste from city government to fund these things that you've talked about?
We may have to cut more, and I'll tell you specifically where some areas are that I'm prepared to look. First, I want to have a strategic plan for the city, and I want to work with the community to establish our priorities. Second, I think it's time to completely overhaul the city's facilities management program. We have city bureaus and city offices throughout this city in paying above-market rent at a time of high vacancies downtown and elsewhere. Second, I will not support filling vacancies in our bureaus as attrition continues unless the bureau managers make a compelling argument for filling them. And third, I think it's time we revisited the question of merging a number of functions, for example, parks and maintenance or other functions of the city in order to find some savings. Thank you.
30 seconds, Mr. Adams?
Well, you didn't answer the question. You haven't made a commitment to an amount. Sure, those are all good tools and approaches that are used continuously in city government. Those tactics haven't been missing. The goal and leadership is what has been missing. And again, a lot of the things that you talk about will cost a lot of money. I think that anyone running for City Council right now has to hold themselves publicly accountable by a specific dollar amount or range. I have. You haven't.
Okay. Mr. Fish, your last question of Mr. Adams?
Sam, you've been very critical of City Hall in this campaign. You've called the budget process incestuous, and you said the relationship between City Hall and the neighborhoods is broken, and I'd have to agree with you. But you were the most important staff person in City Hall for 11 years. As you look back, what share of responsibility do you take for that?
You know, I, as I, as I talked about in my opening statement, I entered public service because I wanted to change government. And at every opportunity, I took that opportunity to change government, whether it was cutting 10 million dollars out of waste and administrative costs, whether it was picking up, up off the floor, the visitor development initiative that repeatedly died, that helped expand the convention center without raising property taxes, without raising income taxes. My goal is always to improve government. What responsibility do I share? I'm sure I share plenty, you know? But the fact of the matter is, is, you know, I'm using that, the lessons learned from my time in City Hall, and putting that to good use in this campaign. And that's why my proposals are more specific. On your way out tonight, there are two, today, there are two tables. On the right is Nick Fish. On the left is Sam Adams. You pick up the literature available, and you decide who's using the experience best.
Thank you, Tom. Okay. Mr. Fish, your rebuttal?
I was making a very modest point. I think Sam is a dedicated public servant, and I think he has done a lot of good. But as I look back over the last five or six years, we've been losing jobs, our local economy is hurting, we've lost headquarter, headquarter businesses, people have lost a lot of trust in our government, and yet no one ever seems to be accountable for these problems. As we move forward, the point that I want to make is, as your next city commissioner, I'll be accountable.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Adams, your last question of Mr. Fish?
Well, you know, it's a very low threshold to, to sort of throw out there all the stuff that has gone wrong. It's like me holding you accountable for the rapid rise in cost of housing while you were a public housing commissioner, or when a shooting or, or violence occurred at Hap that you are responsible for it. I mean, that's a pretty low threshold, if I might say. So my last question is of Nick, on a lighter note, is what's your favorite moment during the campaign so far?
I think my favorite moment occurred the other day when I got to tell the following joke.
Can you tell that joke again?
And I'm gonna tell it again.
Can I tell the punchline?
And I apologize for calling you a wonk. I didn't realize you'd take it so personally.
Thank you.
Some of my best friends are wonks. The other day, Sam and I celebrated our 11th month anniversary as opponents. And the following morning, we were at a panel discussion, and I was introduced as Nick Adams. Not missing a beat, Sam turned to me and said, "Maybe it's time we got married." And two days later, we were at the League of Women Voters Forum in a church. So for me, it has been the opportunity to be...
Thank you. Lucky you. 30 seconds.
I didn't really mean it. But I am now single, so, and I'm looking.
We will now move to the final portion of the program, three-minute closing statements from each candidate. We will begin with Sam Adams.
Oh, wow. Okay. We're moving too fast here. I want to thank you all, I want to thank the League of Women Voters. I want to thank the City Club for having us back here again. I want to thank our moderators and our question mark panel. I want to thank Nick for the spirited discussion that we've had both today and over the course of this campaign. I think Portland is better served for it. I want to thank all of you, and some of you are familiar faces. In fact, some of you, like the Mandels, I think have been to every joint forum we have, and I want, I have just two words in that, or two things. One, thank you, and how do you do it? I am running to shake up City Hall. I'm running to be a tough advocate for Portland's families. I'm running to make sure that Portland lives within its means like families have to live within its means. I'm gonna fight for the average Portland, the regular Portlander, not for big contributions. Those people who are big contributors are for paid lobbyists. I will draw on the roots that I have here in Portland, the roots to help create jobs and help local businesses, improve public education, build more affordable housing, clean up our river, and ensure that city government live within its means. I will fight tax increases and fee increases, and you can count on me to cut waste and improve basic services. These are busy times, and in this race, because we do share a lot of values, it's tough to sort of figure out who to vote for. And I'm proud that those people that have been watching a long time, and in my particular case, for about 21 years, are supporting me. I'm very grateful to have the endorsement of the Oregonian, the Portland Mercury, the Hispanic News, the Portland Communicate Just Out, and to have been voted the best City Council candidate by the readers of Willamette Week. I'm also proud to have the kind of connections and relationships out in the neighborhoods and in the community that show the breadth and depth of the support that I've been seeking to gather. From Loma Village to Gateway, from Nob Hill to Foster, I have the personal endorsement of current or past presidents of over 30 of Portland's neighborhood business districts. This is a first for any candidate seeking elective office in the city of Portland because they know that I will put Portlanders first, cutting taxes and red tape on local companies, and that I can be counted on to create jobs in Portland, and I'm going to count on them and help them to create jobs in Portland because they are from here. I also have the personal endorsement of neighborhood and business leaders, excuse me, neighborhood leaders across Portland because they know from experience that I brought them to the table. And I didn't wait for them to come to me, I went to them. I believe that Portland's best days are in front of us, not behind us, and with the right leadership and with making tough decisions, that we can get Portland back on track and moving forward. I thank you for your support, your consideration, and I'd be honored to have your vote come November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fish?
Thank you very much, and I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge my wife Patricia, who's here. Last time we got together, it was her birthday. We've had a second birthday of a sorts. Our son, born in January with a significant eye problem, had his sight restored thanks to the doctors at KCI Institute. And we are very proud to live in a community that has doctors and treatment available for all of us like that. I want to thank you again, City Club, for hosting this debate. I'm running for City Council because I love this city. I believe in Portland, and I believe in all the possibilities that this wonderful city holds. In the primary, I received 48 percent of the vote, winning in precincts throughout the city of Portland, and I am extremely grateful to those who supported me. What people have told me throughout this campaign is that they want change, fundamental change, and just as important, they want hope. They want to know their tax dollars are being spent wisely on the right priorities. They want to know that their concerns are being heard in City Hall. They want to be sure that the people's business comes first. They want to take pride in their city again. We face a critical time in Portland where the decisions we make will determine whether we live up to our collective ideals or whether we become just another place on the map. Together, we face the challenge of defining Portland for future generations, for my children and for your children. Despite the setbacks of the past few years, people are still willing to give their all for Portland. They believe in their city, and I want to give them another reason to believe in their city government. Thank you very much.
Frances Baker from the League of Women Voters has a brief announcement.
Hello, I'm Frances Baker. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of Portland, and I'd like to extend an invitation to all of you to join members of your community to watch the presidential debates. For the first time this year, the league is sponsoring an event at the Mission Theater, the McMenamins Mission Theater, on September 30th and on October 13th. The theater will be open at 5:30 for people to come in and watch the presidential debates on the big screen. It's a nonpartisan event, so it doesn't matter which candidate you're supporting. You'll be able to order food if you like and drinks while you're there. There is a suggested donation of $5 or $3 for students. At the end of the debates, and the one on the 30th will be on foreign policy, and the one on the 13th of October is on domestic policy. At the end of the debate, we will have an open discussion led on the 30th by Phil Bucy and on the 13th by Mike Burton. There's a national nonpartisan group called Presidential Debate Watch, which has prepared some suggested topics and questions to engage the audience after the debates. We think it's gonna be a really fun experience to get members of the community together to watch these very important debates in terms of the nation's future, and we encourage all of you who can be there to join us. Thank you.
I'd like to thank both Nick Fish and Sam Adams. I think that the city of Portland is very lucky to have two such worthy candidates, and it's a shame we can't have both of them. We're adjourned.[1752.61]